Welcome to the public hearing on behalf of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. My name is Wes Thornhill. I'm the designated hearing officer for these proceedings. The role of the hearing officer is limited to ensuring an orderly hearing so that an accurate record of this hearing may be developed for the department's evaluation. I do not make any decisions regarding these proposed permit actions. On behalf of the department, we appreciate your participation in tonight's hearing for the proposed issuance of Synthetic Minor Operating Permit Number 503-8069-X002 for the Jose O Weaver and Sons Incorporated existing asphalt plant located at 1908 Bay Bridge Cut-Off Road, Mobile, Alabama 36610. The purpose of this hearing is to provide the public with an opportunity to present oral testimony on the draft permit action. In addition to oral testimony, the department will also consider all written comments submitted before the close of the public comment period. The department has requested your comments, and we appreciate you taking the time to make them known to us. On December 28th, 2023, notice of the date, time, place, and purpose of this hearing was posted on the department's website. Also, the department sent notice of this hearing by email to individuals and organizations who had previously requested advanced notice of permit proceedings. In addition, the department utilized every door direct mail to send postcard notification of this hearing. A copy of the notice and the email distribution list will be entered into the record for these proceedings. Copies of the public notice, permit applications, preliminary determinations, and draft permits have been made available for inspection by the public at the offices of the department at 1400 Coliseum Boulevard in Montgomery, as well as on the department's website. This hearing is open to the public, and to anyone wishing to present oral testimony or submit a written statement may do so. Lengthy statements are those containing considerable technical or other complex data should be submitted in writing. Summaries of such statements may be presented orally. Each speaker will have five minutes to present their testimony. All testimony and written comments should be as factual as possible and should address the subject of this hearing. This hearing is an opportunity for members of the public to offer comments to help ensure that all relevant factors are considered before a final permit decision is made. Please be advised that the department is limited in the factors it can consider when making permit decisions and must base the determinations only on whether the permit applicant has satisfied those requirements of applicable environmental statutes and regulations granted to ADM by the legislature. Persons giving testimony may be questioned by the hearing officer or other department staff to clarify points and to develop a better understanding of what is being presented. The proceeding tonight is not an open forum as in a question and answer session. This hearing is an opportunity for you to submit comments that you wish the department to consider in the final review of the permit application. However, you may pose a comment in the form of a question which will be compiled and addressed by the department in its complete response to comments. In addition to oral testimony, written comments may be submitted on the proposed permit action. You do not have to make an oral statement tonight in order to have your written comments considered by the department. Written statements may be submitted to the hearing officer tonight or delivered to the department in Montgomery as directed in the public notice for this hearing. All written statements previously submitted and those received by the department before the end of the public comment period will be included in this hearing record. It is important to note that written comments submitted through postal or electronic mail are given the same consideration as those that are presented in person at this hearing. All oral and written testimony will be included in the hearing record. After giving full consideration to the hearing record, the department will make its final decision on the proposed permit action and develop responses to comments for the draft permit. The hearing record, final permit determination, and responses to comments will be posted to the department's e-file system. This hearing is being captured by a court reporter via Zoom to develop a transcript of this hearing for review by the department. In addition, the entire proceeding is being recorded on video to be posted on the department's YouTube channel to make it accessible to the public. Now let us move on to the purpose of this hearing, the receipt of public comments. The order of appearance of persons giving testimony will be as follows. First, a representative of the department's Air Division, then a representative of Jose O Weaver and Sons Incorporated, then any elected officials or their representatives who have registered to speak prior to the start of the hearing this evening. All remaining members of the public will be heard in the order in which they registered onsite at this hearing. I now recognize Ms. Pam Hunt to present a statement on behalf of the department's Air Division.
Good evening. I am Pam Hunt, Chief of the Construction Materials Section, which regulates permitting, compliance, and enforcement activities for hot mix asphalt plants for the Air Division of the Alabama Department of Environmental Management. In addition to me, the department's Air Division is represented by Mr. Doug Carr, Chief of the Energy Branch, and environmental scientists Sarah Mattingly, Delilah Simpson, and Emily Williams. The department exercises authority under the Alabama Air Pollution Control Act and the Alabama Environmental Management Act to administer and enforce Alabama's air pollution control regulations. The department also has the authority to implement federal air pollution control regulations. Jose O Weaver and Sons Incorporated has applied for additional restrictions and record-keeping requirements in the existing synthetic minor operating permit for the existing hot mix asphalt plant. The facility is subject to federal new source performance standards. These regulations were developed by the United States Environmental Protection Agency and are uniformly applicable across the country. The department administers these regulations in Alabama. These regulations limit emissions of particulate matter and opacity from the facility. In addition, wet suppression systems are used to minimize dust generated from vehicle traffic within the site. The emissions generated from the facility's operation would be in quantities that would define the facility as a synthetic minor source under the state and federal air pollution permitting programs. Based upon our review of the air permit applications for this facility, the department has proposed the issuance of a synthetic minor operating permit developed in accordance with applicable state and federal requirements. While the department understands that there are other concerns surrounding a facility such as this, including traffic, noise, property values, and others, the department does not exercise zoning authority and may consider only comments relating to air quality in its final decision on this request for a modification of the air discharge permit. The department has made a preliminary determination that compliance by Jose O Weaver and Sons Incorporated with the conditions of the proposed permit will not result in violations of applicable air quality standards designed to protect human health and the environment. This preliminary determination will be reconsidered after all comments are received and reviewed. Thank you.
I now recognize Mr. Michael Weaver to present a statement on behalf of Jose O Weaver and Sons Incorporated.
My name is Michael Weaver, President of H.O. Weaver and Sons Incorporated. I know saying Jose, it's Hosey, and we did change the name because nobody knew how to say Hosey anymore. It's a third-generation company. Really, I joke, I say it's a two-and-a-half-generation company. My dad's still around. He's not leaving until I pay him the rest of his money, so we're not quite third. Been in business since 1952, went in the asphalt business since in 1983. We have, along with this facility, we have three others, one in Grove Hill, one in Theodore, and one in Atmore, very similar to this facility. This facility was permitted originally in 1998. EPA changed some guidelines around 2004, I think. I'm not sure the exact year, but it was somewhere around there that included requiring these limitations to be put into permit. I got a call from ADM one day saying that EPA had contacted them and they would like me to put these restrictions on my permit. I said, I have no problem doing that. We had, I had two separate engineers run the calculations. One is back here with me today, PPM Consultants Ned Coleman. The change in this permit basically is limiting our operation to 3,700 hours a year. If you do the math, 3,700 divided by 52 weeks out of the year, that's 72 hours a week. We will never reach that threshold. The 3,700 came from both the consultant and ADM and calculating what the threshold is to stay a minor source. There is no change in our operations, no new equipment, nothing at all. The only thing that you will see change will be for the good because we are very, very interested in surviving and coexisting with the community. We want to be good neighbors. If you didn't get a fact sheet, I encourage you to. On the bottom of it is my cellphone number. It goes to my cellphone right here. If I don't answer, leave me a message, leave your name, and if I don't have your name stored in my phone, leave me a message, and I'll get back to you as soon as I can. Also has my email address. So again, I want to thank ADM and everybody that showed up and is interested in this permit change. Thank you.
Next, we will recognize Walter Moore. If you'll step up to the microphone and restate your name.
My name is Walter Moore. I live at 411 Death Row Street, Mobile, Alabama 36610. The Rena's at Death Row, I changed. It was Chin Street, but I changed it to Death Row because I'd be in the house, and that odor come from Jose Weaver, it's like I'm in a gas chamber. So I've been on Death Row twenty-some years, so I'm here asking the date to the Royal Boy hearing to give me bail. Thank you.
Beverly Cooper. Please step up to the microphone and state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Okay, thank you. I'm Beverly Cooper. I'm the co-founder of an organization called Stand Up Mobile. We are a community and citizen engagement organization trying to represent those who have little voice in Mobile, Alabama. Twenty-five years ago, I was serving on the Mobile Planning Commission when it came to light that H.O. Weaver had basically already built their asphalt plant without obtaining a city permit. After the company received two stop-work orders because of this enormous discrepancy, the project came before our commission. As with all projects that came before us, my habit was to drive out to the site to see for myself the construction and the surrounding area, and when I could, I'd try to speak to local community members. And then I'd vote whether or not I would support the project or not. I voted against this because it was clear that it would have a negative impact on the local community, and it has. Since it went into operation, it has a devastating impact on the local community, the residents, their health, and local businesses. And it isn't alone. It has now become well-documented and with even national attention brought to it, the impact that these industries have had on this historic community need to stop. Africatown is not a dumping ground for industries and companies that others don't want near them. City, county, and you, our state leaders, must prevent this cycle from continuing. While the community will never get back the 25 years that it has lost, it is time to right this wrong. Stand Up Mobile. Thank you.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
I am Yvonne Brazier with Chin Street Restoration Society, and I was at the meeting, I think, that Mrs. Cooper was talking about. And they, H.O. Weaver was supposed to build an eight-foot privacy fence. They were supposed to plant trees and shrubs to buff it, even though that wouldn't have helped that much. That wasn't done, none of that was done. And they just paved the road about a year and a half ago. I can stand at my mama's property line, and I can take a picture of the whole plant. And it was some guys came down from Washington. They said they'd never seen a plant that close to a community. And I just don't understand it. We've been to city council, after city council meeting. We was there a couple of years ago, and the city council member said, we get $30 billion from the state dock and all that's connected, so nothing we can do about it. But somebody should do something about it. And I just want to say, my mother, who never smoked, died of lung cancer, and so many of my neighbors and families died of cancer. I know you can't do anything about that, but you could have done something about the cause. Thank you.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
I'm retired Marine Major Joe Womack, born in Africatown in 1950. I'm Executive Director of CHESS, Africatown CHESS, C-H-E-S-S, which stands for Clean, Healthy, Educated, Safe, and Sustainable Communities. Like I said, I was born in 1950, graduated from historic Mobile County Training School right over here in 1968, went off four years in college, couple of years in the military, and came back in about 1975 or so. And my residence was always Africatown. I came back and got a good job, living with my mother, and she kicked me out. She said, "Son, you're making too much money. You eat my food, get out of here." So I went 20 minutes down the street, and that's where I've been ever since. And so, but as Yvonne mentioned, in 1999, Jose Weaver moved out this way, and they came from West Mobile, where people had a lot of money. I don't know if they kicked them out there or not, but they came out here to Africatown on the served community, right there next to the house on Chin Street. That Chin Street has been devastated. I hope you took the time to ride through, the three minutes it'd take you to go out the way to ride through that area, if you're going to spend the night riding through, on your way back to Montgomery tomorrow. It's been devastated by Jose Weaver. They didn't have a permit when they came out here, they took them to hearing, and then old Mr. Weaver said to the newspaper, "I didn't think you needed a permit to move out there." That's just what they thought about this community and the people. And that's the attitude that still prevails today. They were told to build a private fence, never did. Build some shrubbery, never did. And now you look at the place down there, it looks like they, it's a pit that they dug out over the years, the 10 years, 20 years, they've been there 25 years. It actually is a pit. And all the sediments and stuff they have with it, gravel and the coal and all the stuff they use to make the highway asphalt, none of it's covered, never been covered. And we have wind blow through here on constant basis all the time, just blows right into the houses, right behind the plant. People who have grandchildren can't even come outdoors and play. Grandparents can't come outdoors because of the atmosphere, the pollution that is caused. This outfit has never done right by the community, never done what they were asked to do, and now we're getting noticed that they've been operating pretty much 25 years with a permit that doesn't fit what they're doing. No, we don't think the permit should be renewed. They're not doing the right thing. They've never done the right thing. My grandmother used to say, to determine what a person's going to do in the future, look what they've done in the past. It's kind of happened, done the right thing in the past, they're not going to do the right thing in the future. If they just move, take them and have them move on the south side of Three Mile Creek, where those other like companies are moving, it'd be a great asset to the people, and maybe Chin Street could come back and stop sinking into the bowels of the earth, similar to other areas of Africatown. And because of operation like Jose Weaver, denying them that permit, they've never done what they're supposed to do. Check and see if the permit is going to fit what they're doing. I doubt it because they never told the truth in the past, they're not going to tell them in the future, unless you check on them. Once a month, every day, whatever it takes. The people that don't want to do right won't do right unless you make them.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Cleon Jones, Member of Africatown CDC. It's fitting that I talk, I'm 81-plus, and all of these people that spoken before me, most of them moved out of the community when they were 17, and one or two of them moved in since the Weaver plant been in operation. What I would say, and I'm happy to see so many people in here, but I work in this community every day, and if I had this much support every day, this community would be in much better shape. But everybody comes to this mic or this podium, is talking about killing this community. We've been fighting contamination for the last 40 or 50 years by Joe Womack, Brown's and Sprague, people that doesn't live in the community, haven't lived here in 50 years. All of them are walking with a limp. I'm 81-plus, and I can still run a hundred-yard dash. So I live in a clean community, but I know for a fact that community cannot exist without industry. But we have to hold industry to a certain standard. That's why we, as a community, have partnered with industry in and around the Mobile area to have quarterly meetings so we can talk about what they're doing, so we can suggest what's needed to make for a better relationship and a better community. We can't kill everything. Everybody in here came here in what, automobile, that burns the same gas, the same liquid that Jose Weaver is burning. We live with that, all right? But we don't think about, if all the industry is penalized because you have it right, or one person have it right, where would this world be? I want to save my community. I want to see houses built. I want to see young families move back in this community. We won't do it if we're trying to tear down everything in and around the community. Talking about pollution and Death Row Street. This man moved into the community. Jose Weaver was there when he moved in. He knew that. So I won't burden you with everything that's in my heart, but we need to check ourselves. And the Browns and Sprague, and Joe Womack, who've got these jobs that has to do with contamination and all of that, and they're living off this community, we're going to stop that. But I'll leave you with that. Thank you. Thank you for your patience.
And I would like to add, I appreciate everyone's passion for this. If you please direct your comments to the hearing officer, I would appreciate it. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Charles Williams. I'm with the ACDC CDC. Everybody knows me. I work real close with Mr. Jones, and I work in his community all the time. And I got here by way of my wife, been there what, 20-some years? And I work, I talk to the people, and I listen to the people come up. I hear their plight. I work with Mike, with Jose Weaver, and I heard some guy say that Jose Weaver killed Chin Street. What killed Africatown itself was when industry left. That's what killed us. Because everybody that I know, parents, I went to school with them, their parents worked at Scott, they worked at International, they worked at the Bag Meal, they worked at all these places around here. Yeah, we are a capitalistic society, and we do have blight, we do have pollution. But what I'm not hearing from the people that have come up here to talk about solutions because industry's not going anywhere. We need industry, we need jobs, we need the jobs to build this community back to where it needs to be. Now, my heart goes out to the people that live next door to the plant. You know, I live over here, so I don't have to hear the noise, I don't have to see the pollution, I don't have to walk in your shoes, but I can empathize with you. But also, there are people who work at that plant that's got to feed their families, and we got to try to find a solution. And I hear people talk about, "Don't try in Africatown." It's proud people that live here. It's proud people that built this place, and it's proud people that's going to come back in here with jobs, not with their hands held out looking for a handout. We want to go to work, we want to build our own community with the help of others, and that's what I think we should do. And don't have the misconception Africatown is this poor, downtrodden area. They always have been proud, and they always will be proud. I just want us to find solutions so we can work together with industry. That man back there, Michael, I laugh at him because he turns so red because he wants to try. I think he will. If you go talk to him, he's got his personal cellphone number on the paper. Try to talk to him and see if you can get those trees and that fence that you need or that road paved, or anything that you can do to make your life better. That's what we want to see. And then, once you try, you guys that live there, that actually have to deal with it, talk to the man that's directly responsible with it, and then you guys come and say, "Hey, we try," and see what you guys can do together, and that makes this community better. That'll make this place better. But I love Africa. I live here. I love the people, all the people here. And let's make Africatown great again. Thanks.
Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
I stay at 473 Chin Street, about 50 yards away from the plant. Air quality is bad. I wakes up in the morning, smelly, and night I can't sleep. In the morning, it's hating. That's all I have to say. That's all I have to say.
Ramsey Sprague? Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you, ADEM staff, for conducting this public hearing. Really happy to see everyone who's out tonight. Thank you. My name is Ramsey Sprague. I'm the president of Mobile Environmental Justice Action Coalition, or MEJAC, as it was dubbed by Africa Town residents who formed and named this group. Africa Town residents formed MEJAC in September 2013 in partnership with residential stakeholders and regional advocates with the mission to engage and organize with Mobile's most threatened communities in order to defend the inalienable rights to clean air, clean water, clean soil, protect health and safety, to promote environmental justice, and to take direct action where government fails to do any of that. MEJAC has been receiving complaints about HO Weaver's asphalt plant since the very beginning. When ADEM published a consent order last year in May 2013 for pollution permit violations at HO Weaver, in consultation with our members, several of whom reside along Weaver's fence line and whom you've heard from tonight, MEJAC took the opportunity to alert ADEM to the lack of a published air permit and provide copious evidence that Weaver should be operating under a Clean Air Act Major Source designation, not a Synthetic Minor Source designation. In response, ADEM denied our claim. But here we are, just a few months later, with a new permit for HO Weaver published publicly for the first time ever. We scoured ADEM's file and could not find it. Other agencies filed, scoured, and could not find it. But I'm glad to see this action. Unfortunately, MEJAC's, again, copious written public comment will demonstrate ADEM's proposed Synthetic Minor Permit is still not the appropriate Major Source Permit Weaver should be operating under. The following are some, but not nearly all, not nearly all. And anyone who wants written comments that I will be providing to the state, I have a sign-up sheet, you're welcome to receive them, happy to publish them, print them, they'll be on our blog as we publish most of our things. ADEM, as a recipient of federal funds for enforcement of the air purving and other programs delegated to it by EPA, must ensure it fulfills its legal duty to protect civil rights as required under Title VI of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Such consideration is required under Title VI because emissions from Weaver result in an emissions impact to a community that already bears disproportionate socioeconomic harms. Given the adverse disparate impacts from Weaver's operations in Africa Town and lack of direct economic benefits, I've still yet to meet anyone from the community that works there, or at any other industry in the area for that matter. It provides, in lack of any direct economic benefits it provides to the historic Africa Town community, ADEM must not only deem insufficient the proposed Synthetic Minor Permit, but also revoke Weaver's current permit. It's not in the right permit category. Nothing short of such actions will ensure that ADEM meets its legal duties under the Civil Rights Act. As several commenters have complained in comments prior on ADEM's proposed actions with Weaver, ADEM's approach and other program areas by ADEM, ADEM's approach in prior permit actions to simply attach EPA's EJ Screen Report to their permits is a practice, when it comes to environmental justice policy, which is the law of the land, is tantamount to checking a box on the approach to environmental justice and the protection of civil rights, which has already been in action condemned by the Fourth Circuit Court of Appeals. According to Weaver's website, it is involved in numerous projects that appear to be funded, at least in part, by federal dollars and provided by state agencies that receive federal resources like ALDA, Federal Highway Administration, the FAA, Mobile County, local municipal governments, and the State Port Authority. It's essential that both ADEM and Weaver's actions regarding this Africa Town plant are in full compliance with Title VI of the Civil Rights Act. For example, ADEM must fully, meaningfully respond to comments, including all application and permit proviso requirements, so that any Synthetic Minor Permit issued complies with federal Clean Air Act State Implementation Plan requirements, SIPs. Moreover, when our comments reflect failure by Weaver to comply with federal enforceable SIPs, Weaver must cure those deficiencies, not only for compliance with the Clean Air Act, but also for Title VI. Weaver never formally applied for this Synthetic Minor, and I heard from y'all that it's a technicality, but it's not operating under the correct estimation. Just by carbon monoxide, Weaver's own consultants estimated that it's near the hundred tons per year threshold, at ninety-eight point eight-seven tons per year. But ADEM appears to have failed to include the emissions from all sources. You'll receive our written comments in full length, but we appreciate your time and encourage y'all to deem this application and permit insufficient.
My name is Norman Hill. I'm a resident of Huffman Drive in Mobile. I was born and raised here in the Africa Town community. I grew up on Camel Street. Most of the people here I know, and many of them, including Joe Womack and others, that I'm friends, personal friends, and played sports with them. I go to church here. I used to own a business here in Africa Town, right at the foot of the bridge. So I consider myself, I'm Africa Town. I owned the business for seventeen, fourteen years. I had seventeen employees. Fifteen of those employees came from Africa Town. So I've owned a couple of businesses. And like the young man said earlier, I do believe that business and communities have to coexist. None of us, I grew up around the paper mills and the state docks, and the plant wasn't there when I grew up, but I knew it was there. And none of us wanna live in and around things that we might consider to be a hazard to our health. But yet, we gotta find a way to coexist. As I understand the permit, it is just only to clarify an existing situation that's there now. There's no significant change to what they're doing. This permit is to, I guess, to clarify something that may have been omitted or changed some years ago. The Weaver family is a good family, and Michael, like the young man said, I think Michael wants to do what's right. Let's give, we gotta have business and community coexist. I'm an investor in Africa Town. I go to church here. I own a business out here, and yet, we still gotta find a way. I would say, whether it's the Weaver family, of any of these other industries, and us who sit out, let's find a way to, we can't fight our way to changing Africa Town. We gotta have business. And if there's anything that the Weaver family, we want them to do on Chin Street, let's ask them to do it. If there's something that we want them to do in other parts of our community, let's ask them, let's try and find partnerships. We're not in a perfect situation. We are here right now. And I just say to the Weaver family, be a better partner to those of us who live out here and work out here and pray out here. Let's find a way to make our community better. And we're not gonna, we're not gonna fight our way. We're not gonna have someone from out of town telling us what to do for our own agendas. And one of the things I do agree with Cleon, if we had this many folks who said, "Let's go out and clean our house, clear these yards." I've seen Mr. Jones out of church, riding on a lawn mower, cutting your yard and my yard. I've seen when somebody, when there is a roof that leaks, he is the person that we call. So, I mean, I don't wanna get off point with my comments, but as I understand the permit, there's no significant change to what they're already doing out there now. And I would say, let's find a better relationship between business and industry and grant their approval for this request. Thank you.
I apologize if I mispronounced that last name. Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Good evening. My name is Tony Pogue. I reside at 660 Shelby Street and the Magazine Park community of the city of Mobile. My question is, what type of health assessment standards do you all take into consideration when you permit, give permits in the community? And that's basically what I wanna know, the standards.
This is not the forum. However, we will take your comment, and we will respond to that comment in the written response to comments that will be available. Jennifer Denson? Please step up to the microphone and clearly state your name and the name of any interest or organization that you represent.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Denson. I represent Partners for Environmental Progress. And I'm here tonight to express, on behalf of our PEP Board of Directors, our support for the approval and the issuance of the HO Weaver &amp; Sons draft Synthetic Minor Operating Permit for the Bay Bridge Cut Off Road Site. PEP is a coalition of local business leaders who share the vision of a community that prioritizes environmentally sustainable and flexible practices resulting in economic growth in a clean and healthy environment. Our mission is to improve the quality of life along the northern Gulf Coast by utilizing science-based environmental best practices through common sense and advocacy. PEP's members number two hundred companies around the region and employ twenty-two thousand local citizens. And our members range from manufacturing, aviation, shipbuilding, and all the various suppliers and providers who work with them. HO Weaver &amp; Sons, as you've heard tonight, has been in business since 1952, and they've been a member of PEP since 2016. The company notable, PEP finds it, you know, sorry, I've lost my train of thought. One of the things that we feel is beneficial at HO Weaver is that the company incorporates recycled asphalt pavement and shingles in their asphalt mixes at all four of their southwest Alabama plants. Their mixes are used in state, federal, city, and county applications. The Bay Bridge Cut Off Road Site has been operating in compliance with their current permit for many years. This proposed draft does not make any substantive changes to the limits on the operations of the site. ADEM is simply updating the text to bring the language in line with the operations. The permit includes the operating limits of thirty-seven hundred hours in a twelve-month period, and those limits have never been met by the company, and they do not intend to meet those limits. They will stay below them. The permit limits the type and amount of fuel used to ensure emissions remain below major source levels. The company has always been required to limit their emissions below major source levels. They will continue to do that. The permit does not increase allowable emissions. It does not include changes in the facility's equipment, and it does not increase production rates. So for these reasons, the PEP Board of Directors supports proposed issuance and approval of the draft permit.
Since there are no other registered speakers, please be advised that the public comment period will end at 5:00 PM tomorrow, Tuesday, February the 6th, 2024. All comments must be received at the offices of the department in Montgomery by that time. After consideration of all oral and written comments, the department will make its determination regarding the proposed permit action and prepare responses to all relevant comments received. Thank you for your participation this evening. This hearing is adjourned.